Treasury warrants forty-six, forty-six A, forty-seven, forty-seven A, and forty-seven B. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. We'll move without any minutes to approve tonight immediately to our seven o'clock scheduled agenda item with Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation. And it's regarding a public workshop for the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange Project scheduled for June twenty-fifth, two thousand nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, this is really an invitation to the first in a series of probably three public workshops that will be held in conjunction with the development of the environmental impact statement, our environmental review for the I-93 interch- proposed I-93 interchange between Daskum Road and Route One Twenty-Five. The first one's going to be held here at the Town Hall in the auditorium because we do expect that there'll be a few people here. And this is going to be a fairly informal public hearing. There will not be a presentation made, but there will be a series of stations set up to answer people's questions, to allow folks to review the material that has already been prepared, to ask questions for the project, to let you know that the environmental impact statement is the place where the actual location of the interchange will evolve from this particular part of the project. So the purpose of this meeting is to gain information from folks in the community about their concerns, about their interests, where they think this would make sense, where they don't. There will be information available on the traffic analysis that has been conducted. There will be sketches of the various interchange alternatives that have been, that are being studied through this environmental impact statement. We also have the beginnings of maps that show constraints for the project. I think you probably are aware that this particular area, the, actually the entire location where the interchange is proposed, was mapped as having endangered species. That has been further studied, and the area where the species have been located is substantially smaller than it was thought to be originally. So that portion of the study has been done. The documentation showing the areas where, the areas of major concern for those species will be located on a map, along with wetland flagging, which has been accomplished out there shortly, probably within the next month or so. Notifications with the three towns' conservation commissions will be filed so that the wetland delineation can be verified with the various communities. We expect to have folks at this public hearing who are stakeholders in the project, as well as those folks who have been on the, have been participating in the Tri-Town Task Force. AECom, who is the engineering firm conducting the environmental review, will be present. There will be people from the various state agencies who are also involved in this project at the workshop. We certainly would hope that you would attend at some point. It's from four to eight o'clock so that folks can figure out what time is best for them and come down. As I said, there won't be a formal presentation, so you're not missing anything, but you do have a chance to walk around and see what is being talked about and what information we currently have. One last piece of this is not in relation to this particular workshop, but as you know, we did receive funds for planning to develop a master plan and zoning for this area, and we're in the process of reviewing proposals from consultants who are interested in being hired to help the three towns through this process. So the RFP has gone out. Proposals were received last Friday. We had six responses, several from local firms, but also several from national firms who have been involved in this kind of planning before. So that should also be an interesting piece. The next Tri-Town Task Force meeting is the eighteenth of June at eight AM, and that will be here in Wilmington also at the Town Hall, where we will be interviewing the candidates that are shortlisted for the, from the proposals that we've received. So again, those meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to attend and hear what the folks who would like this job propose. Mr. Newhouse, if there are any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a quick comment. It's nice to understand the financial climate out there. It's nice to see that this is on the fast track, and it looks like it's going well. And I know you've been doing, been working very hard with it, Carol. I know you're doing a good job at it. So I think when it's all said and done, it's going to be really good for all the communities that surround, in this particular area, especially during these economic times. So I think this will be a good thing, and it's nice to see that at least it's somewhat of a priority, given the situation at hand.
It's also nice to have a lull when this can actually, we can actually pay some real attention to this instead of trying to fit it in among a lot of other things that would be going on. So this is an opportunity where planning actually gets to be done before somebody's knocking at the door saying, "I have a proposal. I have a proposal. Look at it." It's a great opportunity. As a planner, it's been a fabulous opportunity as well.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with those comments, and I wonder if you could just real quickly review the, that piece of the intermunicipal agreement or memorandum of understanding that we signed. I forget what we called it, but where each town has veto power. You had mentioned that we're getting to the point that the, the actual location of the developed area will be identified, and I know we all kind of reserved a veto power on that. Can you explain that again?
Yeah. What we did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we did on this memorandum of understanding, we've, the activities that have been going on so far have not been terribly controversial. We've been looking at this whole area from a fairly good height. We're not down to the ground and planting on the ground yet. And so the three towns have worked very cooperatively. I think when we first started the Tri-Town Task Force, there was a little friction. Folks had already established a position, and they came to the table with some heels really dug in. As the process of looking at the whole area and trying to understand what is possible there has evolved, the three towns have really worked well together, discussing, listening to one another's viewpoints. And what we decided when we entered into this second municipal agreement for this project was that to continue to preserve that working-together attitude, we have four members from each town sitting on the task force. There is a representative of the Board of Selectmen, there is a planning board representative, the town manager, and the planning director of each community representing all three We each have a vote at the table on issues that come forward. And so among the four of us, we come together for one vote. So there are actually three votes in the task force to get something moving forward. And we have decided that any one of the three communities saying no is a veto. So that dies, we have to go back and rework and recomprise to come forward with something that is agreeable to all three communities. So individually, we can disagree on our, of our four members on the task force, but when we come forward with our vote, it has to be unanimous vote of the three communities for something to move forward. I think that's a really positive way to proceed.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to give recognition to Carol that, as you said, the three towns being together and the planning board directors working together, you wouldn't believe how smooth they're actually carrying this out and getting things done at a rapid speed. You know, like you said, the proposals are coming in, the wetlands, ninety-three sort of being surveyed as we're talking. The state's putting money out there right now and having it done. The wetlands, the habitant, as far as the wildlife is all being laid out in the last meeting. And like I say, I'm surprised and amazed how good, actually the three towns in a short time have come together and really worked. And really, I don't even see many vetoes, as you talked about. Attending those meetings, there really hasn't been any obstruction at all.
No, nothing yet. We haven't gotten to the hard stuff yet, but we will.
Even the developers and people showing interest, and retailers from each town being there, really is working with the whole unit as a unit. So, you know, I have a great, you know, strong opinion that this is really going to happen and work for everybody's benefit, all three towns. And I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for businesses to open up, job growth, housing expansion, and also transportation. I see all this being worked together, and I think in a short period of time, maybe five years, these three towns are really going to benefit, even tax dollars-wise to the community. They're all, it's going to come forward and work positive.
I think with the support that we've received from the state agencies that are involved in this and trying to fast-track, Mass Highway has been phenomenal in putting this together at a record speed. Nobody wants to be perceived as the cog in the wheel. So I think everyone is attempting to move forward as quickly and on schedule as possible to keep this thing moving and not have anybody be able to turn around and say, "Well, it weren't for Wilmington," or "It weren't for the planners," or "It weren't for Mass Highway." Nobody wants the finger pointed at them, so.
Just to add to that, Carol, even the state giving the grant money.
Yes.
You know, it's come through at a really fast track and, you know, to get this thing going, so. I mean, it just seems, like you said, nobody wants to be that one step to cause delay, and it seems to be really coordinated real good. And I got to give credit to all three towns, all the membership of the three towns. They definitely, you know, deserve some praise, no doubt.
Anything else?
Yeah, very briefly, I want to commend you on the format for the workshop. I like the, sort of the open house concept here, where sort of come and go and take the information in as much time as you have. So I like that. I hope the people of Wilmington will come and take advantage of it. It's the twenty-fifth of June, four to eight PM, and they can come at any time throughout those hours.
That's right.
Okay. I'm looking forward to it myself, because obviously, as the new guy here, I'm a sponge. I want more information. Additionally, if I could ask you, could you remind me or repeat, what's the nature of the work that the recent proposals that these contractors were bidding on? What are they bidding to do, please?
The three communities applied for and received through the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, yeah, three hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand was awarded to each community. We developed a budget, and we have almost two hundred thousand of the three available to hire a consultant to help us develop a zoning scheme for the area that's going to be impacted by the interchange. So it isn't just the west side of the highway. In Wilmington's case, we're also looking at the businesses on the east side of the highway, the area that's developed along Ballardvale Street as part of the study area. What we're trying to do, it's been kind of our mantra from the beginning, is to, is to develop some zoning that will be consistent across three towns, so that a developer coming in who owns a parcel that is part in Tewksbury, part in Wilmington, will have the same rules for building his project, whether he's locating buildings in Wilmington or in Tewksbury, or they're split down the middle. So we're trying to develop a process for hearing the projects and also a zoning mechanism that will be consistent, and everybody coming into this area will understand what the rules are. They won't have to play one town off another. Hopefully, we'll help development process move forward, but it will also help the communities. So we'll be going to town meeting, potentially next town meeting, with a zoning package that will represent what, the work of this particular grant, and have consistent zoning across the three communities.
Thank you. Anything else? I guess that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And before moving to our next appointment, I neglected to mention earlier on that we do have Bill Murphy here from Mass Highway in attendance. We did not get any confirmation from Mass Highway that somebody would be here, but Bill, who's consistently been the guy we can rely on over there, has taken time to be here tonight. So we'll certainly make time for Bill at the end of our regularly scheduled agenda items. Mr. Morris, our seven-ten appointment was with Michael Morris, Town Accountant, and it's regarding an engagement of an audit firm for fiscal years two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand eleven. Good evening.
Good evening. We've discussed this with the town manager and the treasurer collector, and we're making the recommendation that we continue to contract with the firm of Roselli and Clark to do our audits for the fiscal years ending two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and eleven. They've been doing our audits for quite a while. They do a very good job. They had been doing it for about twenty thousand dollars. So this is a significant increase, but that was grossly underpriced, especially considering what's happened out there in terms of the amount of requirements that they've had to absorb the past few years. The proposed thirty thousand dollars is significantly cheaper than most of the other people I could find who would do an audit for a town this size. They also do wall poll, for example, and they charge thirty-five thousand dollars to do the audit there, and they were about our size. I looked at other firms who do audits, and those who do towns the size of us run around about thirty-five thousand to about fifty thousand, with the average being right around forty-two probably. I actually found some smaller towns, for example, North Reading, who pays what we do, and they're significantly smaller than us in terms of total budget.
Pay what we do, what we have been paying, or the proposed?
The proposed.
Okay.
So I still think this is really financially a good deal for the town. There've been a ton of new auditing standards in the past ten years, and they've dealt with them without any increases to us and of any significance anyway, and it's really becoming very time-consuming for them to do these, meet these requirements. There's been a ton of Gatsby pronouncements. There's now over fifty of them out there. Again, they're higher-end, people have to spend their time doing it now rather than they used to come in and do smaller things. Again, it's becoming very time-consuming for them. OPEB, we discussed this at the annual town meeting, was another one that they have to deal with when they come in. All of us will have to incur more time to handle these things as time goes forward, including them. They've been very helpful with bond issues in the past. We have one coming up soon. It will be very helpful for us then. We are going through a financial systems conversion. We would like to see continuity with them, if possible, through that process as well. They have passed peer review with various other auditing firms, look at their audits to make sure they meet certain standards, they meet them, they meet all the federal requirements, and they meet all the requirements of the Department of Revenue. So our recommendation is to reappoint them, recontract them as the case may be for the next three years.
I know there was a change in the name of the firm. What was it, and what is it now?
Initially, when we hired them, it was Roselli and Clark. I'm sorry. Now it's Roselli and Clark. It was Tucci and Roselli. Mr. Tucci decided to go into other ventures, investment, and so-and-so forth work, and Tony Roselli decided to stay with the auditing business and signed on with a partner, Chad Clark. They both come in and actually visit with us on a regular basis and deal heavily with me.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Mike, are you looking for the actual vote tonight to?
Because we'd like to, we'd like to get them in early to do some early testing, preliminary testing on the bank accounts and some of the warrant that we pass around, and it'd be beneficial if we could get something done soon, if we could.
With that, does anybody have a motion either to appoint Roselli and Clark for the next three years or any other motion?
I'd make a motion that we appoint or to reappoint the firm, as you described, Mr. Chairman, for the audit for the next three years.
Second. May I second it? Anything further from the board? Anything you didn't think to mention, Mike, while the votes?
I should probably give a newest member some audit reports, so he can enjoy himself.
All right. Well, we go ahead and take the vote, then. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. And that brings us to our next regularly scheduled item, scheduled for seven-twenty, with Michael Woods, Water and Sewer Superintendent. It's regarding a change in water use restriction policy. Mr. Woods, good evening.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that everything has been signed and sealed, delivered for joining the MWRA, and we are now officially in the MWRA water system, as we were previously in the sewer system. We are a full member of community. With that, we now do not need to go to the DEP this summer and ask for a water supply What that allows us is now to be like every other community that draws the water from the Ipswich River Basin and remove some of the onerous restrictions that we've had on outdoor lawn watering. The way that it has worked in the previous years, we've allowed handheld hoses only outside the hours of nine AM and five PM. That will continue, but additionally, we're going to allow people to use their sprinkler systems or above-ground sprinklers one day a week, and that they can be chose by that individual. So if you watch a weather forecast and choose the driest period of the week to water, you should have a nice green lawn. With that, your water bill probably will not see any large increase. With the new billing system the Water Department put in place last year, the increasing block rate, if someone was to trying water every day, the bill is going to be substantially higher than what they used to. So the good news is we're incrementally getting more water. You're getting enough water to keep your lawns green, and hopefully with that, people will use their water wisely. They will not be watering while it's raining, watering the streets. The DEP is continuing to watch how much water we withdraw from the Ipswich River, and if we exceed certain thresholds, it'd be very likely that the restrictions would have to be put back on. So we ask that everybody honor the one day per week and not be trying to do anything additional unless you're starting a lawn. We do give a little leniency for somebody putting in a new lawn for the first couple of weeks. That's essentially the new policy that was voted by the commission at their meeting last Thursday night.
Just for the point of clarification, Mike, you had indicated that the handheld-only prior to nine AM, after five PM, and you said that that's still the case, with the exception of the one day. Can the one day be at any time with the sprinklers?
No, still prior to nine AM, after five PM.
And after five.
To get efficient lawn watering or garden watering, you want to do it when the sun's lowest in the sky, then you have the least amount of environmental transportation of water evaporating off the ground and just going to the atmosphere you are, and to get it down into the roots where it's going to do some good.
Right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Generally, if I may, you said DEP is monitoring our usage, and are they monitoring for our usage of water coming out of the Ipswich or our usage of water on the whole? In other words, if we use so much water that we end up pulling water from MWRA, that's quab and I imagine, or whatever the mess. Okay. So are they watching for the overall usage of water, or is it Ipswich?
They watch all, all the above, I guess I should say. The Ipswich is a highly stressed basin, one of the most stressed, they claim the stressed basin of Massachusetts. So they specifically watch the Ipswich River. MWRA is, it's under no stress, so that water is not being watched quite with the eye that the Ipswich River basin is. The problem is, is the way they formulate and calculate things, it's almost, it's all clouded together. What they've told us is that you take the population, you multiply that times sixty-five gallons per day, and that's how much water the DEP will allow us to use for residential consumption, which includes lawn watering for the most part.
I'm sorry. So I'm going to ask you to repeat. Sixty-five gallons per day per person in the town?
Right. So whatever the population may be, roughly twenty-three thousand times sixty-five gallons per day times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that's all wound out in the end, we have to be below that number. And the further below it, the happier they are. I will tell you, during the last couple of years, we'll be down around fifty, fifty-three gallons per person. So there's a little bit of water to play with there, but we don't want to exceed that sixty-five number or there's verifications of it. And that's whether it's Ipswich water or quab and water.
To me, that answers the question. I had some people, after it was in the press last week, where it was likely that it was going to be the program that you just described, some individuals had said, "Well, jeez, aren't we on MWRA now? Shouldn't we be able to water whenever?" And of course, they were making the point that that was, you know, obviously it was ridiculous, but I was anxious to find out why, when we transferred to MWRA, we weren't going to have a complete releasing of the restrictions. And that, I think you just answered that.
Joining the MWRA was quite a process. It was a seven-year-old deal that a lot of stakeholders, including people that live out in the western part of the state, and, you know, fishermen and hunters and environmentalists and what have you, all have a say in where the water is transferred from one basin to another basin. And to convince the environmentalists and the state regulators to take water from the western part of the state and import it into Wilmington to use it for lawn watering, it's a bad sell. So we do have unlimited clean water supply for the future, forever really, once, now that we're into the MWRA, they have plenty of water where the Ipswich River was a very finite value that we have already really exceeded. So this will enable the town to move forward for the next fifty, hundred, two hundred years while having to worry about, you know, where are we going to get our water from.
I'd like to, you know, give recognition to Mike and his staff, the water commissioners, dealing what we've come from and the time, like you said, that we actually have the water now, the MWRA hookup. That water line that was installed, you know, had it done, you know, ran down from the Woben Line from Wilmington, big enough main to not have any drawback from companies that have to draw off it also. I think you're, you know, not only you, but your workforce, Mike, that, you know, your employees that work under you, and the water commissioners, that you moved and got the job done. And not only that, I think you've had a couple recognitions from the state of your achievement as far as water quality and providing good service and quality to the town. So I think, you know, where you're here in front of us tonight, that, you know, the appreciation, you know, it should be heard, not only to you, but I think the public should know.
Well, thank you. Anything down here? Yeah, I think you've summed it up, and I think we're put into a situation like similarly situated towns, so that, you know, we still have to be responsible about water use, but we don't have restrictions that are so burdensome that you can't have a lawn, you can't fill up your pool, wash your car once in a while, and I think that's what people deserve in town, so.
That is now correct, and believe it or not, a deep watering once a week will maintain a green lawn and a healthier lawn than watering every day.
Yeah, well, I can, I'm one of those guys that, you know, I have two hundred feet of hoes, you know, dealt with the watering restrictions and, like everybody, and keeping the grass longer and not cutting it short in the hot weather and really dousing it once a week is on the trick to this point, so the convenience of using a sprinkle here and there will certainly be a plus.
Absolutely. One other question, Mike. Do you see, like, the wells that we currently have still going to be in effect, you know, you know, our own drinking wells?
The well remaining, good wells we have.
Yeah. Do you see them continuing on?
Yes, we rehabbed Shawshank Avenue well about ten years ago, before the crisis took place. We... We, three years ago, we rehabbed the Salem Street well, added two additional wells so we could bring back full capacity. We've been working on the Browns Crossing well field, which is the town's largest and oldest well field, the last couple of years doing a lot of engineering and getting through the regulatory process. Town meeting this year passed $2.1 million, I believe it was, bond authorization to go ahead and refurb that well field, and that'll bring back a capacity of about a million and a half gallons a day.
Right. Anything else? Nothing else, just thank you for your time again and for the information. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, anytime.
And before we get into our communication, I'd just like to invite Mr. Murphy, Bill Murphy, up to the front table. First of all, Mr. Murphy, in case anybody didn't hear me mention earlier, I appreciate you being here. I know that you had gotten word that the board invited you and any member of Mass Highway that they thought would be appropriate to come in. We hadn't gotten confirmation of that from the powers that be, but obviously they had spoken to you, and you made time to be here, so we wanted to make time for you to give us an update. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. I'd like to thank the board. Right now, on Route 129, we originally had our last meeting here back in June of 2008, and we anticipated on being completed by May of 2009. I think we've reached that target date. We completed our paving operations on Route 129 as of today. We have a few small incidental things remaining, just some striping, a few plantings of the trees, and then from Mass Highways End, everything will be completed within this Wilmington project with Route 128 and Route 129 and 38. From Mass Highways End, we, you know, most of the delays that we've incurred on the project were due strictly from utilities, which you're well aware of, but now that we've finally finished all of the utility issues, and we thank the town for being patient with us through going through these utility issues, we finally have this job completed. I'm just sorry for the small delays that it did happen on, within the job, and hopefully the town is happy with the project from this point on.
Certainly.
Point to me.
I thought I saw your hand. I had a comment, and I thought I saw your hand.
No, I just, I appreciate Mr. Murphy being here, and I mean, obviously, nobody, you know, other than myself would like to see the project done as of yesterday, but I can honestly say, I know you probably deal with a lot of negativity, not only on Lowell Street but other projects that you work on, but I can honestly say, I guess, at the end of the day, the best thing that could happen, and it has happened quite a bit, was two-way traffic. With the massive construction on Route 129, as long as there's two-way traffic, most of the businesses and obviously residents are more happier. And I can just say this, I mean, obviously, the shock absorbers was a failure, and it took a delay, and things like that happen, and I understand that, but I can honestly say, and I would say it publicly, that I never met Mr. Murphy before, and I can honestly say that he has approached businesses, myself, Northeast Development, I know somebody works at the 99s, where you have worked with those folks, at least kept them up to date. And being a selectman, I've heard from some of the residents in the area that they showed concerns, and they told me that you went to their home, and people always hear the negative stuff. And like I said, I, you know, wish the project was done yesterday, but I'm a realist, and I knew it was my turn, but I like to look at something on a positive side, and those are the positive things that I've heard from the commercial end of it and as far as residents, that, you know, you've been a good leader as far as Mass Highways is concerned in dealing with the problems at hand. And I just wanted to share that, at least with the board, and say publicly, once again, you hear negativity, but I like to shed a little light on the positive. You've always kept myself abreast on what's going on, and like I said, everybody else on Lowell Street, not only myself, equally fear with those residents and other commercial owners on land property. And I'd just like to say thank you, and at the end of it, maybe what we could do is at least maybe send a letter to Mass Highways stating that we know the project was a long project, however, at least Mr. Murphy, I'd never met him until the project, he's been a gentleman. He's always been a professional, he's been very courteous to myself and also folks, and I won't mention their names, but I know some residents that live down the street in Northeast Development, I talked to Mr. Langone on occasion or two, and I know somebody at the 99s, and they've said that. And at least you've kept us aware of what's going on, more so than the construction phase of the contractors. And maybe we could send a letter to Mass Highways, at least letting them know, at least there's something positive out of it, and the gentleman, Mr. Murphy, has been a professional in dealing with us, and at least giving us an update. So at least we know what to expect come tomorrow as far as my business, or if I'm a resident on Lowell Street. At least I know where I park my car, or where I need to do this relative to the sidewalk. And I just want to say, I think that you have been an asset to Mass Highways, and I say that. I mean, and I mean that. And I'm glad that the project ended. The last month, I've seen it firsthand more than anybody. Last month or so, they have gone to town, they've really done a lot of work, and they will be a hot topic today, and it's nice to see that, it's coming to a close, and I'll tell you, no one's more happier than me to see that the project coming to an end, you know, and I just thought I'd shed that, you know, something at least positive as opposed to more negative. Thank you, and I want to say thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's all been said, but just to reinforce it, the town, generally residents, commuters, were understandably frustrated, I think, and they deserved to be frustrated at times, but certainly when the pressure was on, Mass Highway put the right guy out in front because you seemed to, you know, create some realistic expectations and meet them whenever you were involved. So certainly, I know the town appreciates those efforts.
Thank you. I'd like to, again, as Mr. McCoy said, you, I've seen you a number of times in front of this board, and you've always been a very courteous and very gentleman, gentleman in front of us. The only, the only question I do have is, and I've raised it a few times, is, I know you're coming to a finish, and it's probably too late, but the entrances of the cement entrances going to a lot of the retail shops, going down, going down Lowell Street, they're very inconsistent in, as far as height. You've got the road at, at this level, and say the Shell Station mainly, when you go in and out of that Shell Station, it's about a three-inch, at least, three-inch height. And why I'm asking that question, I see that raising pretty well came to a lot of the patrons going in that Shell Station, front ends. I see hubcaps and, and, you know, I'd like you to look into that, and also a few other ones. I mean, you see some that are within a half an inch, perfect, you know, no, no, you know, hazards to people's cars. Today, cars are $40,000, $50,000, and front ends are very expensive, tires, you know, and they got the low rims and everything else, and I'll be honest with you, you know, I just see, that's the only bad feature of that road that I see.
Generally, we normally, the requirements are an inch lip at the commercial locations and at driveways. If that is the case, then it will be repaired, and those are the small incidental things that we create as a punch list, but I will look into that for sure, into those areas.
I have to say, quite a few people, you know, even when I'm in there and other places, you know, bring that to my attention. So again, I know it's finishing up, but I mean, if you could even bevel the cement down with a grinder, just, you know, I think those entrances were poor during the winter, and I think possibly the road, you know, the finish coat was done after the fact, so I think it just, you know, it just doesn't, that part of it, you know?
I do recall at the Shell Station that they, what they had done was, they started, they changed the system around, and they destroyed some of the sidewalk panels, and I'll look at the driveway panels to see if it was due to, perhaps their own subcontractors may have placed them incorrectly, which I will definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you again, we appreciate your time and the update, and just incidentals at this point?
Yes, yes.
The street will be open for?
There will be, there shouldn't be any, there should be completely no detours, no two-way traffic at all times, and pretty minimal, minimal traffic delays at this point. I anticipate probably within the next few weeks, and this job will be completely wrapped up, and we're out of here.
All right.
And I do thank the town for all of that. Sorry.
I was going to say, at the end of the day, it would be nice, maybe Mass Highways could have a nice lidded sign to say, "Open for Business," because some folks, they say, "I'm not driving down that street because I was there 20 minutes one time, and now I hope to think that now the road's completed, folks know, hey, it's done," you know, so maybe a nice big flashing sign on 593 saying, "Open for Business, baby," you know? Yeah. Thank you. Once again, Mr. Murphy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys. All right, with that, we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on the list of communications is a memorandum from Superintendent of Schools Joanne Benton to the board and the town manager, which reads as follows, regarding the recent bomb threat. On Wednesday morning, May 6th, high school principal Eric Tracy was informed of a written bomb threat. He immediately called me. As luck would have it, I was in a meeting at the town hall with Wilmington Fire and Police Chiefs, as well as our NEMLEC representative, Lieutenant Scott Sensobar. We all immediately left the meeting and went to the high school. Thanks to the assistance of the Wilmington Police and Fire Departments, the Wilmington Public Schools has in place well-defined protocols that are implemented any time a threat is made against the schools. The decision regarding a response to safety situations are always made in close consultation with the Wilmington Fire and Police Department and other law enforcement agencies. In assessing the threat, Mr. Tracy followed the school system's protocol on bomb threats, and we all met to determine what the best course of action should be. Needless to say, our clear focus was on the safety of our students and staff. The assistance from many people in the community was extremely helpful. This was truly teamwork and action. A very, very sincere thank you to Police Chief Michael Begonis, Deputy Chief Robert Richter, Fire Chief Edward Bradbury, Deputy Chief Ed Corcoran, Detective Lieutenant Chris Neville, Lieutenant Dan Hurley, Detective Tom Miller, Officer Brian Moon, Officer Julie Brisboy, Lieutenant Scott Sensobar, all the members of the NEMLEC team, George Hooper, and the high school custodians. On the town website, Mike Kyra is quoted as saying, quote, "The essence of Wilmington is captured in the spirit of its people," end quote. It is indeed, and may I add, that the essence of Wilmington is captured in the spirit of cooperation, communication, and commitment of its employees who work together for the shared welfare of the town. The next letter is, is actually a memo to the Board of Selectmen from the Chairman of the Board indicating that the town manager's appointment is scheduled or suggested for consideration. It reads as follows, "On February 12, 2006, the Board of Selectmen reappointed Michael A. Kyra to the position of Town Manager for a term of three years effective July 1, 2006 to June 30, 2009." Section 2, paragraph C of the agreement between the Town of Wilmington and Mr. Kyra states that the contract may be renewed and/or extended in increments of three years by mutual agreement of both parties on or before July 1, 2009. Accordingly, it is my recommendation of the Board of Selectmen take up the matter of the town manager's appointment at its meeting on June 8, 2009. At that time, I'll recommend the town manager's reappointment to a three-year term as Town Manager of Wilmington commencing July 1, 2009, and extending to June 30, 2012. Following a vote for reappointment, we can take up discussion of a contract at a future Next is correspondence from Christina Stewart. She's indicating that the library was awarded first place in the bookmark category of Public Relations Awards by the Mass Library Association at their annual conference in Springfield. It's a contest involving creation of bookmarks by student participants, and they won first We have a letter directed to the board and the chairman from Donna Gasek, Executive Director at WCTV, inviting the board to their Wednesday, June 3, open house to celebrate their new headquarters, and the open house runs from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Next on the, for the board to consider is the issuing of a Sunday entertainment license to Fiesta shows. This is in conjunction with the July 4 celebration. Given that they will be operating on Sunday, it is a requirement in order for them to, to operate that the board issue this license.
And my understanding is that the things that are listed here are the things that are typically included in the carnival, right?
Yes.
Because it's on a Sunday that this is coming before us.
Right. They list a number of different rides that would be in place during the, in games during the course of the Sunday event.
Does anybody have a question, comment, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I just, I'm not trying to, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to push the panic button. I know for years that they've done a great job, and I know the Fourth of July Committee's done a great job, but relative to the personnel that works for the Fiesta shows, have we ever had the police department do like a background check, or the employees that work at these facilities? And like I said, I'm not pushing the panic button, I mean, sometimes you see in the newspaper, you know, I'm not saying that's the case, but obviously, there are some individuals that work at a facility, and I'd say, I saw it on the news not too long ago, and I, like I said, don't push a panic button like a pet of fire, somebody, you know, had a background, now they're working at a show with these amusements. Have we ever done, like, background checks, or does the police have the authorization to at least have a list of the employees to see that if these citizens that don't have a bad background? Have we ever done anything like that?
My impression has always been that, that the weak link there is identifying somebody that's not listed, but you raise a good point, I think I know the same story that I saw on the news. Maybe it makes sense, if the board is otherwise inclined to grant this, to grant it subject to any restrictions that might be imposed by the Chief of Police, and that way, we give him the opportunity to weigh in and address that without putting too many parameters on it.
I'd agree. You know, and I have no problem, I'd be willing to make the motion, subject to the final approval of the Chief of Police, with the understanding that he at least requests a list of employees of Fiesta shows or the individuals that are going to work it, so that way, maybe gives him an opportunity, if he decides to do that, to do a background check, because after all, I mean, it's a money-making proposition, and they do a great job, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm just checks and balances. Like I said, not pushing no panic button, I'm sure things are fine, but it's just nice to know a safety blanket is out there, and given today's situation, I mean, you see all these crazy things in the newspapers and on TV, and you say to yourself, boy, if I have an opportunity to do something, I think it's an opportunity as board, not only myself, that we'd be interested in looking at it, and give it to the chief, let him decide what to do, and I'd make that, Mr. Chairman, as a form of a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right, so we have a motion on the table to grant the request, subject to the review and approval of the police chief, and specifically requesting the chief to obtain a list of employees who'd work there. That's the gist of the motion as it's been seconded. Anything else? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I would just request that the license be signed, and obviously, will hold it subject to the chief's review.
Okay, and you got all that right, Jeff?
Yes, yes.
You can take care of that tomorrow, please. Is this the original, Jeff?
It is.
Okay.
Let me ask you a brief question. Proceedurally, I think you said this, what we were asked to look, look at was because it's starting on Sunday. What happens under normal course of action if it started on a Monday hypothetically? Does this come to our, to the board's attention, or does it typically sort of?
Yeah, I didn't honestly remember, but when I asked that question Friday or today, I can't even remember. My understanding was that because it's on a Sunday, that's the only reason that it's coming before us. Did I have that right, Jeff?
Yes. If it fell outside of a Sunday, then it would not be a requirement.
Okay.
We good on that? Okay. Our next item is, board to consider the request of the Shawshin West PAC to use the town comment on Tuesday, June 9, 2009, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for Family Fun Night. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Same as when you input from the other departments.
As far as I know, there's no issues. I think this is, a similar request has been made in the past. Yeah, when I, I'm not aware-
Yeah, I'm not aware of any scheduling conflicts.
No, there are no scheduling conflicts.
So presuming that there's no scheduling conflicts, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the application?
I just would want to make sure, and it sounds like it's all fairly, it's a repeat event, and they know what they're doing, but, you know, you want to make sure that she even indicates, I think, at some point that they, they'll bag up the trash, and they leave it, you know, as good or better than the way they found it. But if we had some sort of corroboration from the DPW, and, you know, do they need a police detail for this? Is there enough traffic? I don't know what this event really represents. Do we need to go through that exercise, or am I being an alarmist?
Well, no, you're not being an alarmist, although in the past, the Board has either given the permission or not, and that doesn't do anything to impede the police department's jurisdiction if they believe a detail is necessary, it doesn't diminish that authority. And the town manager would typically contact DPW and see to it that they had a handle on what was going on.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the one-day license for Shawshin West PAC to use the Town Common, June 9, and the rain date, I believe, is the next.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? And the next item, published on the Agenda Number 8, Board to Consider Summer Meeting Schedule, I'd like to just put that off for one moment. We had a request come in today, Jeff, which PAC had believed that it had previously delivered, but in any case, if you could, let us know what that request is, and give everybody a copy.
This request came in from the Boutwell School PAC. I'll just read it. My name is Rhonda Rubin, and on behalf of the Boutwell School PAC, I would like to request use of the Swain parking, Swain School Parking Lot on Saturday, May 30, 2009, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for our annual fundraising yard sale. We are anticipating approximately to 10 to 12 tables to be purchased. If the Swain School Parking Lot is not available, I would like to use the Boutwell School Parking Lot. Please contact me directly. Apparently, she had indicated that she had believed that a letter had previously been sent in. We, for whatever reason, didn't have a copy or didn't receive it, so she brought this in today.
Yeah, and I would say that if the Board is inclined to grant the permission for the Swain School Parking Lot, that it just be understood and contingent that we'll have to confirm with the school department that there's no scheduling conflicts, and then, then the, let's see, what date again?
Saturday, May 30.
So if it's the Board's inclination, then to maybe vote on a Plan B for the Boutwell School, just in the event there's a scheduling conflict. And to that end, does anybody have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I could, through, relative to the Swain School, is it going to take place on the parking lot, or is it going to take place on the grass? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, on the lot is my understanding, and certainly we want to be careful of the...
It's not going to be on the grass, it's going to be on the lot. On the hot top?
That's how I took it.
Just wanted to make sure that's the case, because obviously, we took a motion to take the building down because of obvious safety reasons.
That's right.
And I want to read in the newspaper saying that we're allowing this to happen there, and we took a vote. If that is the case, if it is going to be on the grass, I'd be more happy if it could be moved at the Town Common, or better yet, at the Boutwell School. I just throw that out there, you know, if it's on the lot, you know, I just, I just running this by the Board, I just thought, you know...
Yeah, I remember this event, and what they do is they do, it's basically outside the 4th of July building, in that part of the parkland where they've run in the past.
Well, if that's the understanding, and if that could be incorporated in the motion, that they used the lot closer toward the 4th of July building.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? All right, so we'll take that as a motion, the second.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the parking lot, as long as it's in no way, you know, and not a safety concern at all for any department in the town with respect to the school building. We'll accept that as the motion, the second, and all in favor? Unanimous? Do we want to do a Plan B with the Boutwell, just in case of a scheduling snafu?
Sure. It's a separate motion. I thought it was built into that previous motion, not the case?
Yeah, we'll take a separate, we'll take a separate motion at this point.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? And we'll return to our regularly published items. Number 8, Board to Consider Summer Meeting Schedule. I don't know what the Board's pleasure is, but last year, we did it the second Monday in July, and the second Monday in August, making for one meeting in each of those months. So if anybody, certainly speak up, if anybody has vacation plans, we'll work around them.
Can you repeat it again?
Historically, we do one meeting in July and one meeting in August. Last year, it happened to be the second Monday in both of those months that the Board chose to have a regularly scheduled meeting.
It was five Mondays in August this year.
That's a good point. You want to move to the middle one? The middle one in August would be the 17th.
Maybe the 20th in July, maybe?
Yeah, if we're going to do the 17th, it probably makes sense. Any objections to the 20th of July and the 17th of August?
The 20th, I can't make. It's going to have to be before the 18th, if we could make.
Okay.
Or after the 25th, so...
How about the...
The reason why my daughter's getting married that week.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we better work around that one. How about, how about we do this? We'll do the 13th of July, we'll stick with the 17th of August. If something pressing should come up, then we'll deal with it. Sound good? All right, that's what we'll plan on. Public comments. Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Yes. Good evening. Last week I came and I asked the Board to check on the hazardous waste hours of operation, and I mentioned that we had $25,000 budgeted to pay for that, and it was only open until 2:00 o'clock, and I was wondering if you got back with an answer on that.
Actually, Mike Kyra is, was unexpectedly not here this evening. I know that he's looked into that, and next week, we'll also be meeting on a, partly on another question that you have that people have to answer, but...
If we could also find out if the $25,000 was a contract signed with Clean Harbors, and if it went out to bid, because I saw town workers down there, and I'm just wondering if we're paying $25,000 for like a half a day's worth of work for Clean Harbors, do they pay our town workers, or do we pay our town workers to be there?
Yeah, we pay our town workers to be there, but then, put it this way, I understand that you had the question regarding that day, and in addition to that, I don't remember at that time your question about the contract with Clean Harbors, but I will, in addition to the questions that you posed at the last meeting, ask the question about the cost and the contract, and some details surrounding that.
And they were also charging to take away tires, and I thought that would be included in the hazardous waste contract.
But as I say, I'll be able to fill out some more details with you concerning the nature of the contract.
And a few other concerns separate from that. I have a list of all wells in town, and there are 437 private drinking water wells, and we just had a bylaw that got passed at town meeting, I was opposed to it, obviously, that imposed restrictions and made people put stormwater down into the ground, and I'm concerned what the Board is going to do if that raises the water table, causes septic effluent to get polluted and pollute these wells. What's in place to protect these people? What plan do you have to compensate them if their wells get polluted because of that bylaw? And also, I noticed that you were talking about the tri-town development, and one of the biggest contamination sites in America is the Rocco's Dump, and a lot of land between the dump and our well field is being used right now as a buffer zone. And if that starts getting ripped up, and there's contamination leaching from that dump into that buffer zone, what's going to be done to not only protect these wells, but what's going to happen to our Browns Crossing wells if they get contaminated? We just, at town meeting, saw $2 million get appropriated to put more money into that well field, and I'm concerned once that development starts, if that massive contamination from that dump is going to have a negative impact on our well field.
Okay, I would, let me go back to the question about the groundwater bylaw that was passed. I don't believe that this is the forum to debate the merits of that. I know that you were against it, I know the town meeting took that on. I'm not going to use this forum to rehash that. I can only say that, you know, I heard that point made at the meeting and prior to that, and I just categorically don't agree that that is bad for the environment, quite the opposite, I believe, it's a plus for the environment, so...
I'm not here to debate it, I'm just here to bring our awareness to not only the town, but the Board, and see if you're going to be prepared for lawsuits that might arise as a result of maybe an action that was, you know, in line with what your philosophy is. However, if your philosophy's wrong, and they do get polluted, what is going to happen with the town as far as lawsuits?
Well, I can tell you that, I mean, the Board's not inclined to debate, you know, whether or not town meeting took the right action. It is what it is, you know, I don't want to take up the Board's time or the public's time with that. On your next question with regard to the Rocco's landfill, I would just encourage you to continue to watch the process as it unfolds. The process between the planning that's been done to this date, and the point that a shovel will be put in the ground, if you will, will include a tremendous amount of regulatory oversight at three local levels, a regional planning level, a state level, and a federal level. You may or may not be comfortable with that regulatory oversight, but I think that's the most honest answer I can give you, is to stay tuned on that and watch it as it unfolds, that, you know, where the Board of Selectmen isn't in a position necessarily to comment on that, but certainly, even if it were, it's, we just haven't even gotten close to that point, I think. So if you ever have questions about where meetings are, and what the subject matter of those meetings is, certainly we'll provide that information to you.
I noticed that a lot of money's being spent on preparations for that project. I just thought it might be wise to do some test drilling there, to see if there is contamination, so we don't continue to pour a bunch of money into the development and find out that there are contaminants from that massively contaminated site leaching into that buffer zone, and we go and spend a lot of money on pre-development costs and find out that it was a waste of money.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is a point of fact, the town's really not spending a ton of money. We did get some grant monies to implement some planning, and, you know, to this point, it's not even, it's not even determined as yet where the development would be, so it's hard to do any kind of physical testing, or drilling, or anything like that, until you know where it is that you're going to look to do something, so...
And the other bit of information that I had was relative to MWRA. I hear people talking about conserving water and that sort of thing, and the Town of Watertown, they had an aggressive action to conserve water, and one of their city councilors wrote a letter saying that Watertown saved water, but yet their water bills went up. And as I researched the MWRA...
If I could, and I know it's rude to interrupt, and I really, I'm trying not to do that, but, you know, I'm going to insist that the town's decision at town meeting to join the MWRA was the culmination of approximately seven years of planning, from a $500,000 comprehensive water resources study that was done at the town's expense, which included a cross-section of people, literally tens of people from different walks of life and different interests, through, you know, state legislation, town meeting votes. I just, you know, I want to be courteous, but I really am not going to use this time to rehash that decision, and I understand that you have questions about rates, but it's really not the appropriate forum.
I read through hundreds of pages of the comprehensive report, and I just thought I'd read paragraph two tonight. It said, "The Town of Wilmington is authorized to withdraw an average daily volume of 3.36 million gallons per day from the Ipswich River. According to the information contained in the draft CRWMP EIR, Wilmington has not withdrawn more than an average daily volume of 2.58 million gallons per day, it's, you know, close to a million gallons less than we're permitted to draw from. And at town meeting, we were told that we were not allowed to drill any more wells in that Ipswich River basin."
Let's, this is why, and this is why, again, I didn't want, I didn't want to interrupt you, but again, this is why I don't, I won't let this forum be used to rehash this decision. You're talking about a plan that took several years to put together. The drafts, when you put them on a table, are about this thick, and under new business at a selectman's meeting, you're pulling out paragraphs to that plan, which at this point is a moot point anyways, the town has voted to do this. So I understand how passionately you feel about your position on this, but this is, this is several years later, several hundred thousands of dollars later, you know, processes that I've never seen since I've been involved in local government in terms of opportunities for the public to weigh in and to have an opinion. So it's just not fair to allow people to pull, to pluck these things to second guess what town meeting did. I understand where you're coming from, but I just don't, I can't do that. It's not the appropriate forum.
I'm just disturbed when I read through the half a million dollar report, and I see inconsistencies, and I...
But they're not, see, that's the thing, they're not inconsistencies. There, you see one thing, one line that you're pulling out. This, I mean, if you, you know, truthfully, first of all, I don't accept their inconsistencies, but secondly, that report took years to generate, which was done so at public meetings that were intended to ferret these things out. I mean, we just can't do that here. It's just not what we're here for.
I understand, but I noticed that you were talking about water conservation earlier, and I just want...
We were, and if you, if you notice, we were talking about water conservation earlier, which certainly was on the regularly scheduled agenda, and if you weren't here, you must have been watching it from home. If there were questions about water conservation, that certainly would have been the appropriate time to raise that. So, I mean, again...
I thought the public comments were at the end.
The public comments, and I know we had this discussion at our last meeting, but I don't mind saying it again, the public comments section of the agenda is intended for folks who don't know where to go to find an answer, to get that answer. The purpose of public comment is not to have substantive discussion about matters which aren't fairly brought to the public's attention by being put on the agenda, that aren't fairly brought to the Board's attention by being put on the agenda, and quite frankly, that the Board might be inclined not to put on the agenda if we've been there, done that, you know? So public comment certainly is intended to create openness in government, but it's just not intended for the purpose that you're trying to use it, which is to make an argument about substantive items which are of interest to you that the Board is, the town has already taken action on.
Yeah, I was just trying to point out that people are expecting their bills to go down by conserving, but as the economy has suffered, the MWRA water usage has gone down, and as a result, when they're not getting enough flow revenue, okay, what happens is everybody else's bills go up to make up for that lack of flow. So I'm just, I thought I'd point that out, because I think people have the misconception that we're going to save water, and our bills are going to go down, but as I pointed out, Watertown's bills have gone up.
And this is, I'm going to use this as an example, all right? To, just to say to you, and all, I'm trying to be fair, but we're not going to continue this back and forth. When you talk about towns like Watertown and the example you just gave, you're talking about full membership towns, and that's the only water supply they use. So for that example in and of itself, I don't want to debate you, but I can't let that just hang out there. So I'm being drawn into this debate that we really want no part of. Wilmington is a permanent part-time member. We will only pay for MWRA water that we actually use. So, you know, again, that's why in this kind of a forum with the kind of an impromptu debate under public comment, it's out of line to have these kinds of discussions, because that's the kind of incorrect information that people get piecemeal, that we're doing a disservice to allow that to happen. So if you have questions about, where any of your questions can be directed in terms of various departments, if you have questions on how to file any public records requests, certainly fire away now, but please, don't make me interrupt you. No more substantive argument about any of those.
I do have some questions. At the town meeting, they voted to appropriate, I think it was a quarter of a million dollars, around $20,000 for the MWRA fee, but as I read through the information, I see that the entrance fee to MWRA was $3.1 million.
Here's what I'm going to do. If you have questions...
This is a vote...
No, 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 it's my turn, it's my turn. If you have questions about the fee structure with the MWRA, I would direct you to the Water and Sewer Commissioners and the Water and Sewer Superintendent, who can, who I'm sure will respond to you and answer your questions. If you need any printed documentation in that regard, file a public records request, and I'm sure that they will answer that in the manner that's prescribed by law, which is to tell you how much it'll cost to reproduce it and to get it to you within 14 days unless there's an exception for that public record, so...
I appreciate that, thank you, thanks a lot. That wasn't my question, though. My question was, procedurally at the town meeting, if we were joining MWRA and it was costing us $3.1 million, that wasn't an article at the town meeting. So I think that there could be a problem with the town meeting, because they didn't vote to appropriate $3.1 million, they just voted to appropriate $220,000.
I'm imminently confident that the vote that was taken at town meeting passes legal muster. It was reviewed by council prior to it being published, it was reviewed again, as it always is, the entire warrant before town meeting, so I'm not concerned about any legal ramifications of the vote.
So as a hypothetical example, if the town was buying something, and it was going to cost $3 million, but yet they were only asking for $100,000, what would happen at next town meeting if the people chose to not vote for the other to manage the money?
That, you're asking hypothetical, that frankly, I think you need to direct a request to the Water and Sewer Department as to how the fee structure works, the rate structure works with MWRA.
Yeah, this actually has nothing to do with that. It pretty much has to do with the town meeting vote, and what, if it was appropriate, should we have been voting to approve $3.1 million? Because we only voted for like $220,000.
Mr. Chairman, this is McDonald. The chairman has been more than gracious to give you an opportunity to say your piece. He's asked you to end debate on this, and you just keep bringing up the same things. The vote on, that happened at town meeting, we're pretty confident it's going to work out. He's given you the direction to go to if you have other questions on the Water Department, the MWRA.
It's not the Water Department. I'm trying to make this clear, all right? I don't mean to disrespect you, but I'm saying that there is a procedural question at town meeting where there was an entrance fee of $3.1 million, okay? But yet, that was not voted to approve that.
The, what I'm telling you is, from my perspective, and unless I hear from the board otherwise, from the board's perspective, the article was correctly brought before the town, and it was voted on, and the question is not a legitimate concern for us.
Okay. I guess the whole question is, they voted, but you wanted $20,000, next year they're not.
Mr. McDonald, you've posed the question a number of different times, I keep giving the answer, and you just don't accept the answer.
Obviously, we're going to have to agree to disagree.
If we agree to disagree and can leave it at that, that'd be great.
All right, maybe we, I can just put it in question for me, you understand what I said, maybe next meeting you could give...
No, that one I answered. I'm going to give you the information you were asking for regarding the hazardous waste day, that's a, that's a question that we can answer for you and that we should answer for you, but no, I'm not going to speak to the article concerning...
Well, I just thought the town council might be able to give an answer on whether that procedural issue was correct, or whether we have to...
I'm not going to present that to him, because he reviewed it before it went on. That's, that's an exercise in futility. I'm not going to do that.
If you think about it, you're going to vote to only fund a portion, portion...
You've made, is there anything else, or? Because we, we're at an end with that question.
I hear that there's a position open in town for Assistant Building Superintendent, and is that going to come before this board? And are there going to be a set of standard qualifications for that position?
I'll tell you what, the town manager just made his appointments, there was no such position on his appointments. If he has, if he has any changes that he has in mind, he certainly will bring it to the board's attention. To my knowledge, he hasn't brought anything like that to the board's attention.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. New business or committee reports?
I'd just like to, again, I think yesterday, the parade, the Memorial Day Parade, all the people involved did an outstanding job, even the coordinator, again, Lou, and Chris Barry, and all the way down through all the people that were participants, and the Wilmington High School band, I mean, it's incredible. Even today, I heard good praise about how good that band, people were impressed about. And I think that's what makes Wilmington a great, well-tight community. I think the effort that we see, and even all the kids that participate in the parade and the involvement, again, I'd like to congratulate everybody, especially all the, again, the Pox Ground Crew, I think they did a great job on, you know, the lawns and the maintenance, all the way down, and including DPW and all the way down. I think it was a very, very, you know, nice day, and everything worked well.
Yes.
It was indeed a beautiful day, and congratulations to the town for coming out in great numbers. I don't know if there was record number attendance or whatever, but it sure seemed like it. I wanted to draw special attention to and recognize all of the folks that organized and put together a remarkable event, and it was the Relay for Life. I didn't stay for the whole thing, I witnessed a couple hours of it and was stunned by the response by the community. So I congratulate those that organized that Relay for Life, I congratulate all of them, the dozens of teams that walked through the night, through the rain. I think that was a, an applaudable and commendable effort, and I hope that they return again and continue their, their strong efforts. So congratulations to all of them, and well said about the parade, Ray.
Anything else? Important dates.
The important dates, 4th of July, Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Knights of Columbus will be on June 3rd, 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 4th is the Shawshine Tech graduation. June 6th is the Rec Department's fishing derby at the town beach, 9:00 to noon, and June 7th, the Wilmington High School graduation.
Hearing no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move second.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?